Would you please silence your pager cell phones? And please provide us with information from council and board.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer and then the pledge. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Parker, is there any public comments?
No. So there's two applications tonight, both leading to Christmas in the city. First one is from the bid on Saturday, December 3rd. This would be the downtown outside portion, 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Main and Center Streets, parade at 6:00 p.m. They'll also have caroling, food, and drinks. And the second half is put in by Batavia Players with the bid on also December 3rd, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the city center concourse with vendors, entertainment, refreshments, and Santa.
Thank you. Are there any comments or concerns?
Oh, will the city be reimbursed for overtime and concourse hours?
No, they, um, this is a budgeted item.
Okay.
The city budgets for Christmas in the city.
Okay, any other concerns, questions? Council President report, announcement of the next City Council business meeting to be held on Tuesday, November 14th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center.
Mr. President, it's Monday, the 14th. It says Tuesday, but I think the 14th is Monday.
It's Monday.
It's Monday, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ivanikowski. It'll be Monday.
Monday's not.
Okay, next, the presentation of Mr. Nichols on the Dwyer Stadium. Am I in the way?
Yes, we're gonna drop that screen. How long do I gotta hold it? Do the whole three go? Yeah.
Thank you.
Why, that's so nice.
Thank you.
Which one's that, the one that's right?
It's just gonna take a minute. It's not that we have it, it's the computer. Slideshow, right? It's on beginning. You are set to go, sir.
Hello, I'm Robbie Nichols, owner of KN USA Sports. We control the Muck Dogs.
My name is Mark Witts. I'm the general manager for KN USA Sports and Batavia Muck Dogs.
We just wanted to come today and give you a recap on our last season and things we're doing in Batavia and seeing if we can change anything to be better on the usage of Dwyer Stadium.
So here we have a list of our 2022 events from this last season. We sort of wrapped up this October, April, 40. High school games throughout May, April, June, Challenger Division baseball. Obviously, we had our Muck Dogs home games. Just had over 50,000 people in attendance for those throughout the season. Thirty youth baseball games. We did our Battle of the Badges game in July, Police v. Fire here. That was a lot of fun. We did some dance clinics through KMS Dance Academy. Yeah, I was gonna say, our winners are here.
Yeah, who won?
So do you wanna say who won?
I think the fire play.
They have to come for two years in a row. Except this is their year.
Looking forward to next year. We did some college games there as well. SUNY Geneseo and usually field September and October. We did host two concerts that was new this year, Margaritaville and ZBTV, the Zac Brown Tribute Band. So that was a lot of fun. Our Alzheimer's Walk was in October, and then we just, just finished with our Muck Dogs Trick or Treat, which is our second year of doing it. And our first year, we had 500 trick-or-treaters at about 2,000 families. This year, we had 2,100 trick-or-treaters in 5,000 families. It was a zoo. So that was our last event of the season. And then this, just, I think if you click one more, it'll play.
Think?
Try it.
You're not that fancy.
This is, if you go down to the, there we go.
Oh, here it is.
There's a quick video to show you. The line went all the way down.
To the next street and down to the high school.
Just in line had, waiting to open the doors. It was a, it was a madhouse. It was a lot of fun. So this is some community, some of our community support and attendance numbers for the 2022 season. The annual visitors this year at Dwyer for all those events, about 84,000 people went to the park this year, so we increased that by 13% from last season as our first, first year with the team. There's 169 baseball teams of this caliber in America. We ranked 22nd in the United States in attendance, about 1,800 a night to 2,600 capacity. We hosted over 120 events. It's averaged about 20 events a month from April to October. Dwyer Stadium has something going on, so we're shooting for every single day. We're almost there. We hosted 22 picnics throughout the year, and we went and spoke at schools. We did some youth baseball clinics with our team. We walked in the parades. We donated a bunch of local charities in area events as well. So this is just.
These are just, yeah, more community slides. If you see the players in the community talking in the parade. That's where we're talking at. What school was that?
That one was Elba.
Elba. It was a Spanish-speaking school on Elba, and the coach and all our Spanish players went there. This is our, everybody in the parade, getting ready for the parade. This is our favorite event, Challenger Division baseball. We take a day out, we play with the Challenger Divisions. We have a real, they're the stars of the show, the kids are, and we have a real game, and they all hit home runs, and they have their games, names announced. And this is our best event of the season. Our recap, the shirt you got, where you were the West Division champions. So we're one game away. We went to the very final game, and we lost in the championship game. So I was really proud of the players. You may wanna remember the name Nolan Sparks. He was the pitcher of the year in the whole league. He gave up zero runs during his entire season and won his playoff game. It was great. We had four players named to the All-Star team. And we were one of the businesses of the year for the Chamber of Commerce in 2021. So we're very happy with our year here in Batavia.
This is just some more, some stats for our Muck Dogs Mafia, our fans. We have 504 season ticket holders, so 20% of our stadium is already filled nightly with just season ticket holders. We had over 25 local school groups, dance groups, karate groups that performed at Dwyer during our games. 10 local color guards, whether that was scouts, military, police, fire. We have our turnbull heating and air baseball buddies, so youth baseball teams get to run out there with their favorite Muck Dogs players. We had 25 of them this season. Seventeen 50-50 fundraisers with youth sports or nonprofits, so helping raise some money locally with our partners in the community. Batavia Original sponsors the Teacher of the Game. We recognize 30 teachers at the game. They get four free tickets and a meal. HP Hood does our Bat Boy, Bat Girls. They get to go out there on the bench the whole game. We have 39 of them. They get to sit right there with the players. And 35 first pitches, whether that was some students, community leaders, businesses. We even had for our Elba night, the Onion Queen threw an onion out as a first pitch. Get creative with them. And then, of course, our most popular item, which is the photo, our Graham Corporation kids, when we did 30 of those, the kids just run the bases right in the middle of the game.
These are a few of the things that we've done this past season over at Dwyer from painting locker rooms, baseball mixed to the field, sprayed fertilized grass, power washing outside of the stadium, power washing seats, painted both dugouts, added a new bullpen to the visiting team area, landscaped Dwyer Stadium, new cooking appliances, added 40 tables and 150 chairs, painted the main office, painted the snack bar, and, most important, new updated toilet paper rolls and toilet paper holders.
This just shows an overall impact here. The previous ownership group was averaging about 100 season ticket holders, 900 people a night. They did about 20 non-traditional Muck Dogs games, maybe 15 picnics a year from the data we had. And then we took over in 2021. We've had over 500 season ticket holders every year, 1,800 a night. We're averaging 80 non-traditional Muck Dogs rentals each season and 20 to 25 picnics.
What's next for Dwyer Stadium? These are a few things that we have talked about we would like to do. We have been, a little bit of talks about it. One is, we've had a lot of season ticket holders looking for a party deck that was there for many years before we took over, and they would like to see that come back. My most important, one is number two. I think safety netting is the most important for our fans, and we'd never like to see somebody get hit with a foul ball. They're coming out with their family to watch a game. Plus, I'm at the snack bar every night working, and balls come into the snack bar, so we're hoping we can get some more netting near the snack bar. Number three, at this time, we would like to talk to the city and talk about extending our lease when we can. It's kind of hard to believe, but we only have three years left. Two years have gone by already, and we wanna make some more major changes and put some investment in capital money into the ballpark. But we wanna make sure that you're happy with us and would want us here for another 25 years or whatever you'd like to see us here. And there's a seating project that needs to be finished. It started and looks great, but it stopped, I think, because of COVID, and we missed, we didn't finish two sessions. Some other projects we'd like to work on. That's what we would like to see next. And especially thank you, thank you for trusting KN USA Sports to come in here and run your stadium, and we're happy with it. If there's anything we can do to improve, we're always open to suggestions or different things you'd like to see your stadium used for. We tell everybody we're the holder of the keys. We want the high school games all being played there. We want the kids' games being played there. We, like Mark said, we would, we're happy if it's used every single night. That's our goal. It's your stadium, and we want it to be used. And we also have a big announcement. We're working with the arena, with Matty Gray, and I think Matty's done a great job for what we've seen. We've been over there a bunch, and we're working with him trying to bring more business and people to the arena. And we're gonna announce today on March 31st, Friday, March 31st, something Batavia's never seen before. We are bringing the World Championship XIR, which is Extreme International Ice Racing. So we're bringing motorcycles on ice. These motorcycles go 60 mile per hour, and they'll be in the arena. And they go all the way around the country to bigger arenas, and we're gonna bring it here to Batavia on March 31st. So it's gonna be something, I'm getting kind of goosey, because it's ambiguous. We go around and put in 12,000 C3s and stuff, and I have a part in all of that. So we're gonna bring it back to Batavia on March 31st. So it's gonna be something very unique. And it's gonna be very limited tickets, too. Usually, we get 12,000 people at the buildings and stuff, so we're gonna, the fire marshal will have to work those. Any questions, any suggestions that we can do better?
Yeah, just a comment, Robbie. Thank you. Keep up the good work. You've done wonders for our community. It's something I always believe in. These venues belong in the private sector, and the private sector gets the job done. But you've just been doing great.
Well, and on that note, well, thank you very much for that. But it's really not Mark or I or our family. It's the community. It's any sponsor you saw that we announced, it's, it's working because it's a community coming together. The community cares about Dwyer Stadium. It's all those big businesses and small businesses, you know, that help us make it possible, so.
Now you have to top the great job you did. It's always, that's always the top.
Well, we're going for a championship this year. We have 30 players signed as of today already for next season, and we have a lot more players coming from bigger D1 schools. So we're excited about that. We have great local talent, too.
I just wanna say, Bobby, you came in here a few years back and made us a lot of promises, and you've kept them, and you've done more than you promised. It's very exciting to go down to the field and watch a game now. It's a, it's a whole different atmosphere that you've created, and that, that's your baby. I mean, you, you created that. So we, I, I speak for myself, I speak for my constituents. We're very grateful for what you've done.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And we get most joy about, you know, it's not about money. It's about seeing smiling faces. And that Halloween event was just incredible. But when we do Challenger Division baseball, we'll let you know when that is. When that day comes, I can't lie, I cried during it, because you see those kids that just wish they could be one of the Muck Dogs or baseball players. That's, that's the neatest event that we do, so, but thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming. We'll try to get together before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Did you put that app in with Tammy? Can you just make sure Mark does it? Mark's.
Okay, next, is there an animal restriction ordinance seeker? Is there an agreement to move it to the next business meeting? Any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. So Rachel, you could probably answer them, I'm sure. But I noticed a lot of this is filled out. Is the seeker done?
Correct. The seeker is always done by Doug Randall and for council's review. So it is, every seeker you have seen is always done by our codes department and inspections department when it comes through. In this case, it is a environmental assessment form and the narrative, and council is basically appointing themselves as lead agency and considering the environmental impacts and finds that the proposed action will result in no significant adverse environmental impacts.
Okay, so the seeker's already done, and we're just voting to...
To be the lead agency, and you're not voting tonight, you're moving it forward. But yes, to be the lead agency and to agree with the statement that this seeker will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts or the action, and the action is the animal ordinance.
Is there a public hearing to this?
We already had it.
We had the public hearing.
Correct.
And the seeker?
No, we don't have a public hearing on the seeker. We have it on the local law.
Right, but is there a public hearing for the seeker?
No. Nope. Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Are we in agreement to move that to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Next, for replacement of city phone ring central agreement, Mr. Fitz?
Yes, honorable council members, you may or may not be aware, but the city's current phone system that is used in all the departments throughout the city is currently no longer being serviced by a provider. It hasn't been for quite some time. Prior to my arrival, a committee was put together with Chief Hableish, the, at the time, the confidential secretary to the manager, as well as two consultants from outside agencies to look into replacing that phone system. We did somewhat of a bid system, similar to an RFP, except we actually went out and found companies that had what we were looking for, and through the process, selected Ring Central to come in and provide us with this service. We will still get AIS, our current IT people will be involved, helping with, obviously, the setup of it as well as implementation as we go forward. It is a cloud-based system. It has a lot of unique features, some that we need, some that we don't. But the ones that we don't are part of the base package anyways, so we're gonna get them. Things such as, like, there's a, similar to the old AOL chat feature. They have that where our internal, we can chat with one another through the system. They all go through the computers. We vetted it through the police department to ensure that they have everything that they need, as well as fire department and other departments in the city.
Any questions?
It'll always be the same question, as long as I sit on this council. Were there any local companies in the phone business that could have provided this or bid on it, and did they, were they given the opportunity?
Local as in City of Batavia?
In Genesee County area.
I was. I'm sorry, but, so back in 2019, when I was the assistant manager, there was conversations with Empire that those phones at the time were not this sort of package. It was where you bought the phones for a price, and then you had service packages with them. So this is a different model. We looked at, and you can speak after I do, but we looked at other communities that had just gone through implementation, so the best that they could get. And having everything in the cloud, we thought was the safest for our infrastructure to move forward. And the phones, again, are updated and serviced on an annual basis by this provider, so we're, we're never out of a service contract like we are today. Sean, go ahead and jump in.
It's nail on the head. We, we looked at several vendors, several different companies. There wasn't a specific local company that was able to provide this type of a service that we're looking for.
This Ring Central is currently being used by Steuben County for their entire phone system, which is approximately 10 times larger than ours. So they've just gone through the incremental phase, and we've been on a conference call with them, and they've agreed to help us through the process if we have questions or anything like that. So it is being used by a local municipality as well, and they give it, you know, a strong recommendation.
Yeah, I have some questions. So it says here that decreasing the expense account contingency, 22,290. But then it says here, this contract will be for a term of 60 months at a rate of 22,290 initially.
So first, I'll address the resolution. The, what we're doing is decreasing contingency and adding room in each department for the expense of the phones in the first year. It's a 60-month contract, is that correct, Eric?
Right.
So I don't know where the 220 comes in. I can at least answer why the resolution is formatted like that. Next year, in the budget, you will see this baked into everyone's telephone line when we walk through the budget.
Right, but this 22,290, is that just a misprint?
Yeah, that's just a typo. It's 22,920.
22,920.
Oh, I see.
Reflect it down below.
I'm sorry.
And the other thing, it says, it says 22... Okay, so let's say it's 22,920 initially. Define initially, what's that mean?
The first, the first year of the contract is that they're giving us a discount on implementation, which is baked into that cost.
And then what's it gonna be? It's a six-year contract, so, or five-year contract, rather, but...
I don't have that in front of me.
I thought it was 22,90 each year of the contract.
No, I believe that that's the first year. I can get that information back to you.
It's not substantially more.
No.
In the, in the out years, so.
Yeah, it was just an initial, which it should have been on our first page.
Is it this, the 16, 6?
No, that's the cost for the service versus the use of the phones. It's broken down itemized.
Okay, can you just email it to all of council?
Yeah, we'll email it before the next week.
Thank you.
I understood that the 22,920 was the cost to purchase the phones and purchase the system, not the cost of running it over the next five years.
That's, that's for the first year as well as...
As the purchase.
Correct.
And then the next four years, it should go down, because you don't need the purchase, right? You just need the...
No, the phone is not a purchase, it's a lease, so that's a lease.
Okay, it's a lease, okay.
Which allows us to, if something breaks, we just get another one. We're not paying additional for it. So it keeps that service going for 16 months.
What are we purchasing, then? It says...
We're getting the service, the implementation is the service, so each line has a fee.
Well, it says to purchase the system. What are we buying? What are we gonna...
That's the phone system itself with Ring Central that they're gonna implement for us. So all your voicemails, all of your, we're gonna have voice, voice to email, so it can go to our emails and all that. That system itself, there's a charge for each individual phone, and then there's a lease payment for the phone itself. So if the hardware breaks down, it's replaced throughout the, the system. So instead of purchasing the phones outright and having them, and then when things go wrong, you gotta buy all new phones and pay all new fees, it's been, it's a lease program. So if you look at the itemized costs, the top two is for your line maintenance, to maintain your line, just like you would any other phone system. And then the bottom ones are for the actual individual phones, the hardware themselves.
Most of these companies, corporations, they have these kinds of stuff anyway. They're leasing the system.
And then the follow-up on what Mr. Kelly asked, where is this company out of? Ring Central?
They're based out of, let me say, California.
Yeah, they're based out of California.
Belmont, California.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Are we, are we ready to move this to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Next, deferred compensation for the banner selection. Rachel?
Thank you, Council President. I'll let Dawn Fairbanks talk to this selection of deferred compensation plan. We did an RFP that is required every five years, and Dawn was the one who undertook all the hard work to achieve that. So I'll let you talk about the provider we're selecting.
Yep, the city provides a deferred compensation plan for its employees. It's basically a voluntary 457B retirement plan. They contribute themselves. There's no contribution from the city on their behalf. It is governed by the New York State Deferred Compensation Board, which, as the city manager indicated, we have to go out to bid every five years. Our expiration is December 31st of this year, so we went out with RFPs. We had four providers that submitted and responded, and we were recommending that we continue our relationship with Empower, who we're currently with. We've been done with that for several years. The 457 service group is the side group, the kind of services to plan, and they have serviced us, I'd say, for about 25 years. So we just would like to continue that relationship, so we recommend that we move that forward with selecting them as that provider.
Any questions, concerns? Wait, can we move this to the next business meeting? Okay, use a reserve for ice rink chiller?
Thank you, Council President. We continually discover issues with the ice rink chiller at the ice rink, which was built many, many years ago. And most recently, we needed to add R22 or refrigerant to the system in an emergency purchase. So I'll let Michael Ficarella, Superintendent of Water and Waste, explain a little bit more. But we have been working with Matt Gray, the new operator. We were scheduled to do some renovations of locker rooms at $170,000 capital cost. We've pulled back. We're holding that, those funds, because we believe in the next year we need to address the whole chiller system, because if we don't have ice, the locker rooms will be no good. So, Michael, if you can explain a little bit more about what's happening with the system?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Essentially, upon startup, they found there to be some major leaks within the system. And this refrigerant ultimately is what creates your ice. Upon those leaks, it drained out most of the system. So in order to get the system up and running, to keep it up and running, we had to purchase 360 pounds of refrigerant, I believe it was. And even at that, it still, you know, needs, could use more, but it got us back to where we're operable at this point in time. So it's a definite thing that we need. You know, it's not a matter of, can we use it? We absolutely need it to have that ice rink up and running.
It's important we need that because there's a lot of activity on that.
Correct.
Thank you. Could I just ask the silly question of, were the leaks fixed before the refrigerant?
Yes, they have.
Okay, because I was gonna say, are we gonna keep adding and adding?
Hopefully not. Hopefully, you know, at that point in time, we didn't know those leaks were present. When the system was shut down last year, we weren't aware of it, but...
Unrealistically, they're fixed for now.
Correct.
The system of that age is going to continue and continue and continue. That's why we're going to scale back with looking at the locker rooms, because you're going to have, if anybody's ever had the privilege of going in that back mechanical room hall, I'm sure you've been back there, it's not a lie to say that's a ticking time bomb back there, and it's really going to be addressed in the future. But they are fixed for now.
I just hope we'll look at the... I was at the rink all weekend. My grandson plays hockey. The improvements there are fantastic.
Yes.
It's not a rink we could have been proud of a couple of years back. I mean, we traveled to all the rinks, and all of them are nicer than ours. I know the locker rooms are absolutely in need of repair. They're super bad, and I hope we're not just going to, you know, spend all the money on refrigerant and not do those locker rooms at all, because we want to be proud of that rink, because I think he's going to make it grow like they're making the Muck Dogs grow.
And I think in a very short amount of time, you'll see a large improvement there since the new operator's taken over, and I think you'll continue to see that, too. So, now we've got a great relationship with my office, Mike's office, manager's office. We've worked with that daily. We've got a maintenance log, and like, it's been a good relationship so far, and I, you know, see that continuing.
If you could just get the kids to air out the rinks.
Yeah.
I want to comment. Two years ago, I went through the rink, and it was totally unattended. The attendant was someplace, not in the building. He was nowhere to be found, and there was havoc being raised in the locker rooms, taking a beating. But I'm happy to see local people now that are accountable, running things. But my question is, how old is the chiller system? Didn't we...
When you look at the record factor, you really can't pin that down. You're probably looking at least forty years old. I'm going to say eighties.
I thought it was when it was built, or have you replaced it once? Seventies.
Seventies, attached to the firehouse after the... So, you're talking fifty?
Alicia, you know?
I know you know.
I can't say for sure, but I have had a tour back there.
Uh-huh.
I think that's original.
Yeah. The chiller's original.
So, that's original. Didn't... I thought a few years ago, though, we replaced some components or something to do with the chiller.
Yeah, we did a compressor replacement.
Okay.
But we just found out this past month that that compressor hasn't been turned back online, because they never got it actually working. And we added refrigerant last year. So, when Michael and Brett talk about the increased communication and relationship between ourselves and carrier, who we have a contract with, and the rink, there are, we're going to keep running into these things, because we're going to continue to find places that might not have been maintained to the level that they need to be for operations to continue. But you're absolutely right.
Good thing we're getting a new phone system. You're going to be using it.
That's for sure.
Okay, any questions? We all consensus to move this to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, next, commercial maintenance contract. Rachel?
Yep. Thank you, Council President. The Water and Waste Water Department solicited bids for a five-year electrical preventative maintenance contract, and O'Connell Electric came in as the winning bid for thirty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars. I'll let Michael explain exactly what this contract entails and how it helps prevent electrical catastrophes in the city in the future.
So, an electrical technician will come in. He uses infrared equipment to look at any major electrical connections in generators, electric panels, transfer switches, and essentially they're looking for any heat source that shouldn't be there, because that heat source is indicating some type of fault, some type of failure in that electrical connection. And if they do find any sort of heat source, they dig into it further and essentially just prevent any type of injury, you know, damage to our buildings, anything like that. And like Rachel said, it's annual. This has been going on for a long time, just that the five-year contract was up, and we needed to rebid it.
Concerns? Are we all in agreement to move this to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Next, Marcha Selly funding agreement. Many of you remember Matt Worth and Ray talking about Richmond and Harvester, and that eighty percent of our funding was going to be federal, but if they could, they were going to apply for Marcha Selly funding to supplement another fifteen percent of that contract and that work for this project. So, just three or so weeks ago, Brett?
Yeah.
We got the notice that we were awarded Marcha Selly funding for the project, so our local share will be around five to ten percent now, so we're very excited about this. And tonight, you would be authorizing the agreement with the state of New York for the funding. And Brett, please add anything else you have.
Yeah, so you're basically, the way that breaks down is you're going to get about forty, a little over forty-nine thousand dollars towards the design portion toward Richmond and Harvester, and then two hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards construction. Kind of the idea behind getting that money, we really never heard anything, tried to follow up with them, eventually got through to somebody and said, oh, really happy that you followed up, because the person that was handling this is retired. Let me check into it. Turns out, you're getting, you know, that amount of money. So, in turn, that's going to kind of help that project with being able to replace all our four-foot sidewalks on Richmond and Harvester with ADA compliant, five-foot sidewalks, ADA ramps, and kind of the idea behind that. So, unexpected funding, but additional funding nonetheless, so.
Thank you. Questions, concerns? Are we all in agreement to move this to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Next, for purchase of a folding machine. Rachel?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. The city finance office and clerk's office utilize a folding machine for different mailers. It was purchased back in two thousand and no longer works. Lisa Neary and Terry Dean looked into pricing with Pitney Bowes and found a model that they believe will work for the city, and I'll let Lisa explain what 's with it.
It's just a step-down model from the current one that we have, so the price is a little bit cheaper. I have paperwork with me right now, but we think it's going to work well for the city based on how it's being used now. And getting it at this point, we'll be able to train many other departments on how to use the machine, so we're not just relying on one person to do all the holding and stuffing of envelopes.
And we'd be using administrative reserves for this purchase.
If it's a step-down one, you want one to see the deal now?
Well, we're not using it as much as we used to, Paul. We now send out our water sewer bills to be printed and mailed by an outside contractor, so we're no longer printing those at house and stuffing them. Pretty soon, we will no longer be printing out paychecks and stuffing those, and we are paying more vendors through ACH wire transfers, transmissions. So, we're stuffing very fewer envelopes as we will along, so there's not a need for a higher capacity. And the company that we are working with agreed that, based on our usage, the lower, the step-down model is sufficient.
Questions? Brett?
What kind of warranty do you get on that?
I think it's covered for, well, we'll have to pay an annual maintenance fee, I think of seven hundred and ninety dollars, but they waived the first year.
One-year warranty, that's a... I'm sorry.
There's an annual maintenance fee that we have to pay to maintain the machine.
Oh, okay.
But they waived the first year.
So, they maintain it till it breaks down?
Yeah.
Completely. And then, I think what happened with this one is it cost about half the amount to buy a new one that it did to maintain it this time.
But on the warranty, on the maintenance contracts, that's where...
Yep. Yep, so that'll be baked into budget costs as we move forward on the operations side.
Are we in consensus to move this one forward?
Yeah.
Next, we have bulletproof council grant. Rachel?
Alicia, I'll let you talk about...
Each year, the department applies for funding through the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant Program or the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership Award, which awards funding for the purchase of half of a ballistic vest. You can't purchase the whole thing. They will only cover the cost of half of a vest. So, this year, we were awarded five thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents towards purchases of upcoming new purchases and replacement purchases. Our vests are manufactured to last, are expected to last five years based upon wear and tear, and there is a five-year recommendation that we follow on replacement for each officer as that time comes up, so we will use this funding to offset the cost of new vests, which are approaching the nine hundred dollar mark at this point.
What's the life expectancy of a vest?
Five years.
And then what happens?
And then it deteriorates to a point where the ballistic rating is not guaranteed anymore, so you have to put that into reserves. I mean, they can still be worn, but again, it's recommended and it's standard in the industry that there are five-year replacement cycles.
Pretty much a no-brainer, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Are we all in agreement to move that to tonight's?
Yes.
Special business meeting? Okay, we have a car seat grant. Rachel?
Yes, thank you, Council President. You've seen this resolution before. There was a small error in the total of the resolution on the last time you saw it and passed it, so we have fixed that error, so our accounting is correct, and we're asking that this move to tonight's special business meeting, along with the bulletproof vest grant.
Questions, concerns? Are we in agreement to move that to tonight's special business meeting?
Yeah.
Good turn.
Okay, we have an abortion from Mr. Byakowski. A second. Mr. Schratt, roll call.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
We're going to our special business meeting. We're going to roll call that. Okay, we're going to sign agenda items on ninety-four twenty-two. Mr. Byakowski? Resolution ninety-five twenty-two. Schmidt? Okay, I guess we're going anyway. I think it's the ninety-four twenty-two, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the twenty-two twenty-three police department budget to reflect the receipt of a FYI twenty-twenty-two Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership Award in the amount of five thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents from the Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Byakowski, a second. Mr. McGinnis? Questions, concerns? Roll call.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Okay, ninety-five twenty-two. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the twenty-two twenty-three fire department budget to reflect the receipt of a car seat grant in the amount of nine, four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Thank you. You have a second. Mrs. Briggs? Questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Pacino, would you like to give us another second question?
Certainly. Whereas Article VII, Section one oh five one F of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of a municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Thank you. You have a second. Richmond? Roll call.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.